Okay, good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Public Utilities Commission regular meeting for Thursday, November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five, time now three thirty-one P M. To begin the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all. Any public input? Okay, of course, comments. We'll run along. Okay, as far as the minutes go, I would accept a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting of September eleventh, two thousand point five. We have a second?
Same.
Okay. And the only people, actually, you can't second. Uh, they're doing your, you know, we were gone, so I'll make the second. Yeah. Um, any questions? No worries. It's easy to do. Okay. Seeing nothing else, any further discussion? All favor approval say aye?
Aye.
And? Actually, hold on a second, we don't. We don't have a form for approval. Yeah, so let's, let's, uh, yeah, I apologize. Yeah, I'm looking at this, I'm like, oh, that's the problem. Yeah. Um, so what we can do is I make a motion that we table both minutes over. Was Dino in there?
Brian, we're used to where I was here. For the next ones.
Okay, so, oh, for the next one we can do, so we can't do this one, September eleventh, we can't do it. Do we don't have a court? Commissioner Valente and Dino were gone. Right, so, uh, I move that we table the approval of the regular meeting minutes from September eleventh to the next meeting.
Okay.
All favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, the motion is tabled. So we're gonna come back up, I would entertain a motion to approve the meetings for the regular meeting of Thursday, October ninth, two thousand twenty-five. Actually, you'll take the motion? And then, uh, P, you wanna second the motion? Outstanding. So these minutes, yeah, again, here, nothing going on, but, um.
No.
I'm sorry. Dino, I should say, Dino second. So please refer to that as Dino. It's my fault. You guys gotta start showing up.
I would need a separate number board.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Okay, so we have a, uh, we have a motion by, uh, Sutton Street. We have a second by Commissioner. Yeah, okay, let's say that. Any further discussion on the minutes? Boy, I have something easy. All in favor for the minutes, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Wow. Off to a great start. Financial report.
Financial report. So, water and you were currently both in a deficit position, this what happens every October. Um, it's because we've had one billing, but we have four months of bills. Um. The water, I didn't see anything crazy happen on the water. There's nothing really going on with the water, other than we've already paid half of the capital expenditures in only four months of the year, so that's gonna drive it up a little bit on the water. Um. The sewer, the reason sewer is more out of whack is we paid most of our debt, we paid most of our debt further in the year. So obviously, the further in the year we get, the less hard it is to pay those grid lines. Um. The. It might not double sided. Um. Water looks at the collections down a little bit over the prior year, but sometimes that happens based on how much, um, the sprinkler use and stuff like that.
We also have some billing issues, is that you think affecting this? I mean, I know they, well, accidentally went and they actually took money out of people's accounts.
Okay, I, I don't know what adjustments were being made.
All right.
I know the QDS system, they've been scrambling around getting that online, so I think it matched up with MURIS, but I don't know what issues they may have come across.
Okay.
What's in page with Mr. Turner's copy?
I will, um, one time, uh, before you told me that.
Oh, yeah, we're not doing all the detailing.
Yeah.
I still did all the detail. All right, I screwed that up, my bad.
So, no page four, five, six, seven?
Yeah, I gotta change the way I do that. Um, so this is the revenue side of page. I just wanna look at that level.
Okay.
I still do the whole thing for myself, so that. Um, so, water collected was down a little bit over the prior, uh, year, when you look at the same period, but sewers up almost to enter down. Um, a lot of that's sewer assessment. Um, so sewer assessment through the first four months last year, we collected four seventy-four, this year, seven four, seven forty-five. I think some of that was related to the billing issue of the timing or some of that stuff. Um, so collected on sewer, we already collected one point five million dollars this year, which is higher than our expenses. But because the way we bill out the sewer assessment, it looks like we're running on a deficit, but cash wise, we're at an excess right now. Um, but again, it's just the way that we have to bill versus what we actually collected the sewer assessment. Um. And water is billed out higher than what we've actually done, but some of that's the, um, the loans. Um, on water, we paid out two million dollars in capital projects. Uh, but so far, we've only collected seven hundred and seventy-three thousand, but it's the delay in when we submit it to the state to get reimbursed. Um. So neither one's in a bad spot for four months in, it just, the number looks glaring because it looks like we're in a deficit, but we're not really running a deficit. We're just running into a paper deficit right now. But that'll catch up when we do more billing. And when we get further in the year that we, the debt settles down. Um, other than that, there's really not a lot to talk to on either one, we still haven't paid Danbury for twenty twenty-five. Um, we're gonna have to meet with them at some point, but they're not in a rush for their money, and we're not in a rush to give it to them.
Well, we have the number, right? It's a one point.
So I booked the one point two five number that they gave us in twenty-five, so it's on our books. So we'll be paid out of twenty-five when we get there. We're just not in a rush to give us cash until they give us more backup, for why it's up almost three hundred thousand dollars. So. But in the meantime, we'll hold on to the cash.
I see something in the paper, like they had audits that now.
So they just settled their audits, they were behind, so they just finalized, so we're working on our twenty-four, twenty-five budget. They just finished their twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
Audit?
Audit, yeah, yeah, yeah.
They said multiple audits, but.
Because you do a, there's a federal, state one and a comprehensive annual. Um, but they finished their year before that within the last, they've been way behind. So now technically, they're not behind anymore. Because the next one's not due till December thirty-first, but they just finished the prior year this month. So my guess is they're gonna be behind on that one again. But, so. You know, but we're, again, on paper, we have that one point two five allocated. We're just not in a rush to hand over over twenty dollars without really the backup of what.
Yeah, how far it goes back for what?
We asked on the last bill, we talked about it last month, um, we had, I asked for the prior three years. We haven't heard anything back yet, so we haven't asked again, but we also haven't given them any money. So. It'll get back.
Hey.
Well, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, for invoices, I'll make the, uh, I would accept a motion to approve two hundred and thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighty-six cents for invoices. So I have a second, or you have a motion, sorry.
Don't move.
A second?
Sure.
Um, any discussion, Tom, I mean, this looks like this typical.
Yeah, um, uh, construction wise, you got Kovacs, um, the second David Tinker invoice for that project, which was midway, the new main extension.
Yep.
And then there's two for Wright Pierce, one for Skata, one for.
Is this a final for Tinker?
No, um, we paid one twenty-four.
Okay.
And now eighty-four, so we're holding back about, tell, is it seven or?
Ten thousand.
Ten or twelve thousand, we're holding back.
Okay.
Avon calling.
We have a doorbell? I've been here for all these years. Okay. Any, um, any other comments, discussions?
I just, I have a question about Melanie's bill.
Which one?
Well, the seven hundred dollar for sewer invoices.
Seven point two.
I have to look at the invoices in specific, with that this for? You can look. Of invoices as well.
Yes, research sewer department regulations is one point five dollars.
And then you had immediate garden claims procedures.
Right. Yeah. Yeah. And we had, and around.
Mm-hmm.
That is, but it has to break down as there.
So it wasn't just one cent, it was.
I see they're diligently looking through the invoices, so we'll wait another moment.
I have a question, I don't know what's going on. Talk about, no, but, uh, on Tinker's bill.
Yeah.
The. Seems like the temporary patch that was there was better than the permanent patch, then you put a permanent patch in on the, on the highway. On three O two?
No, that's still temporary.
It's still temporary?
Yeah. And they're gonna. We're holding back then.
Are they gonna do anything before winter sets in on that?
Uh, probably not, they gotta let it settle off, definitely, definitely see what the state's gonna require. Whether it allows to take just an inch off or what, but we put back in eight, uh, six inches.
A little bumpy.
Yeah, it does have a lot, yeah, especially the second.
But that, that was the, they took out the temporary patch when they did the ditch and put another.
No, they, when they went backwards, they, um, they had to disconnect the old transit, so they cut cap that, so that's right back, it's, it's another patch added.
Another patch added.
They did the cap.
But they did the, they did the full depth. Now the state will probably say in the springtime, we've got no inch off of it.
Seems like it could have been better.
That's not for that.
Maybe, maybe just ask them a little bit. Okay. So I have.
Okay. Would you, gentlemen, anybody else like to have the invoices, we could. Okay, well, now, try mine's, all favor say aye?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. All right. Next up. There's no new business, how about the left piece of report?
Uh, just a couple of, uh, brief, um, items, uh, fifteen Great Pasture Road, that's that last property. Uh, that becomes Danbury. I just happened to randomly see them going into a meeting with P and Z. So I just popped my head in and just reminded them that we need to work out a inter-municipal agreement with Danbury.
Okay.
So I kinda let him know, hey, you know, you, you need to push this a little bit if, you know, if you want this to happen. So he, he's fully aware.
And, and, and the last time that we did this, it's basically, once they go get the P and Z approval and all that, then we go do the agreement, right? Is that? So we just basically, the last time, it was a mayor, the selectman in the room, and then.
And I don't know if that was done for a specific site development, so.
That was for coal pit.
It was, right, so, well before my time, but I don't know that there was anything, a project kind of in, in the balance there, I think it was just existing stuff. Because I think that coal pit stuff, those properties are older than like oh-seven, I think that was done in oh-seven. So I guess it would really be up to this commission and P and Z, whether we wanna make it a condition of, of approval, which I, I assume we can, you know, we can do.
You said this was on P and G's agenda, you saw this?
Uh, well, they, they were, they were meeting with David, so maybe, I know they got their, I think they got their, whatever Danbury calls it, environmental review, I think they got their approvals there, and I think they got the vessel inland well. So his next step now is P and Z in both, in both towns.
Okay.
So.
And he'd still have to come here for.
I, I look at it as the ball's in their court at this point, and if, if Danbury gives a conditional approval on them getting, working out uh, an inter-municipal agreement between Danbury's Public Works and us, then.
Okay.
I, I don't really see it as, as a problem.
No, no, they're all, they're all okay with it, I talked to the mayor, they're fine.
And I think his plan B is he can extend something from, uh, I think they have a forced main at the corner where, where the road turns kinda left and you go to Shelter Rock where the sports complex is. I think they have some kind of a forced main system there, so. If, if not us, he'd have to extend from there, which I think would be quite expensive for him, so. And I don't think Danbury really would, would have necessarily a problem with an agreement with us.
Okay.
But I just wanted to, you know, bring it up, let you know where it's at. Um. Maple Avenue well, uh, I, I'm talking to S B Church about getting that Maple well two-way, which badly needs to be redeveloped. Um. We, we have, we're on their schedule for, uh, in December, looks like the first week in December. So once they do that well, we'll have Maple pretty much up to, up to speed. And then we'll be in a position, if we need to shut Bergstrom down for any reason, we'll have full capacity. Um, which we will, when I get into Bergstrom, we, we may need to do a couple of things with the plant shut down, so, but that's gotta happen first. Uh, and then lastly, speaking of Bergstrom, we're in service for about the past month. So things have been going okay, we're still working out some kinks, but, uh, so far, so good.
How's the building?
Uh. Good, everything, yeah, yeah. Some other, you know, punch list items that still have to get done.
Yeah.
Uh, which I'll get into when I get into the capital.
Okay.
But that was it, we're directly.
You're gonna reschedule the walk?
Anytime, you, you, you know, I can do it one-on-one, I can do it with a couple of you, I can do it with the whole group.
Um, we, we could do it certainly sometime in December. We'll have, it, it won't be, well, it'll be like, after December fourth, we can start looking, appointing two extra members. You know, the charter did change, we're gonna add two members to the board at some point. So if you wanna wait till we get that, we can do one for everybody.
Yeah.
All right, okay. Uh. That's it, am I your replacements?
Uh, we, we had a reading suspense month, so we went from meeting four to one oh six. Oh. That's your app, there, but, you know, but as you see, twenty-seven, um, new, new failures or whatever you want.
Okay. P C Capital Projects status summary?
Okay, so let's see, Bergstrom, uh, our pay level's at ninety-two percent. Uh, in the past month, we, we needed to do a change order for the install of the hot water heater, um, this, this was looked at. Some months ago, the, the heater that was specked out was no longer being manufactured, we found an alternate. It actually was a little bit cheaper, we actually got a credit on the actual heater. But now it was not gonna fit in the place where it was set up to be placed, so it had to get moved across the room. And, uh, so there was, there was a change order there for the, for the labor material. Um, I think it was on a order of like sixty-seven hundred. Um. As far as the job major items left, one major item is the painting of the, the face piping. And then that's gonna require the plant shutdown, because they use a two-part epoxy, they're gonna be in there for about a week, and, 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 you know, the odor really is, you, you know, they're wearing masks when they do that, and I don't really want our guys exposed. So that'll get done sometime in December, after we have Maple, you know, ready to go. Um, there's some miscellaneous HVAC work that needs to get done, our training still for the HVAC system. Um, we have a Skata site acceptance test scheduled, so Wright Pierce's instrumentation guy will kinda come down and go over things with, uh, N I C to make sure that, you know, everything that they were looking for, they have. Um, we also have to test that recycle backwash system. Um, there's some minor adjustments to the chemical feed systems, which again, will probably be done when we shut the plant down. And, uh, the hunger for a tarry face piping actually has a valve that's gonna have to get replaced, so again, that'll get done when, when the plant is shut down. Um.
When does that begin, the shutdown?
Well, we need to get Maple redeveloped, and then, you know, so.
January.
No, no, if they, if they take it down Monday, December first.
Okay.
They're usually, by the middle of the next week, it's, it's back on, so I'm thinking, uh, the week of maybe Monday, the fifteenth, we should be ready to, um, you know, shut down to get some of that work done.
Okay.
Um, on the Skata project, contracts are signed, notice of proceeds been sent. Um, I mentioned last time that there was an issue with Eversource being the actual owner of the radio frequencies. And, uh, they kinda messed up an ongoing project that's happening in New Haven. Um, which is gonna use that frequency for their system, and they basically sent them a letter saying they have to get off the frequency, so. Um, I mentioned last week, N I C's gonna look at an alternative through either using fiber at our sites or cellular, and, and they think it's actually gonna end up being a, 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 a less expensive install for that. So he's working up a kinda overall change order, um, you know, so that we can go in that direction. Um. Uh, and I, and Jack is looking into where fiber is in town, to see where we can get fiber.
Okay.
Um, and then lastly, for capital, the Clark Park One Sewer Station, uh, we needed to replace the generator that's been in the works. Um, finally, I got the electrician, is almost ready to, to mobilize, um, the generator's ready, but we don't wanna take delivery until the electrical is, is all squared away, that should be happening here in the next couple of weeks. That's it for capital.
I, one question, the, um, change order to move the water heater.
Yeah.
It, it, it just seems kinda strange that they don't have the right place to put it, wasn't that planned?
It would, it was, it was installed, it was already done.
Yeah.
But now we gotta catch up with the change order.
Well, why do we have to move it?
Wh- because it's, it's, it was like a double unit, it was wider than the one they specked out, the one they specked out was no longer being made. So we had a hard time going around and finding one that was gonna be, um, I guess, I'm trying to think of the designation, U, I want to say U S M E? Something mechanical engineer certified. So it's.
Yeah.
And you needed an expansion tank also on the loop, going back to keep the, the showers, the eye, the eye washes and the showers, uh, heated.
It's ready to get a double unit for eye wash showers and?
And, and, and hot water for the building.
Okay.
OSHA requires the showers to be at a certain temperature.
Okay.
Years ago, you never heated the water. You needed the shower, you pulled the handle and you got drenched in cold water.
No, I'm just curious, it just sounds kinda weird that we didn't, that it was specked out for a certain size. Yeah, that was only six.
It, it's the same size, it was just a different unit, it was, yeah, they had to find a different unit and it had to get moved based on other equipment that was in the room.
Okay. To change?
Was, was the budget.
Yeah.
We're gonna pay it out.
I know, it's, it's not, it's just, it's just silly, because it's a minor little.
Every single one of those drives me a little nuts.
Okay. Is that your hearing aid blowing crazy down there? Okay. Oh, great. I feel bad for you, we can all hear it. Uh, P fast class action update.
Uh, one thing, uh, we actually got another payment, it's payment number two for the three M class action, we got six hundred and forty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars and forty-three cents, so we're up to. Brad, we got, I, I should have wrote down what we got previously, we had a couple hundred thousand. Yeah, so we might be eight, nine hundred thousand that we, we set up an account for.
Okay.
And that should tally about maybe eighty-five percent, I think, of what we're gonna get for that one, for the three M.
It works for me, I've got really bad tinnitus, so it's, it's good to listen to stuff. Okay, um. Sewer capacity study update. Okay, I, I, I got it kinda.
Two eighty-two. Last year, and so part of that six forty-three.
All right.
So.
And we're expecting two more, two more companies?
Right, let's follow one.
DuPont, and then they actually set up a second one.
You want your help?
I didn't know you were my grandkid.
Okay, we're having way too much fun today. Okay, so we have, we have two more, but they're less.
There was a three M in DuPont as one class action, and then there was a B A S F, and I forget the other company, that's the second one. So there's four companies involved.
But three chunks of money?
No, multiple chunks of money.
Okay.
They're giving it to you in percentages over, over time.
All right.
So when they have it, we'll take it.
Yep, all right.
Yeah, overall, they will make interest on the right.
We do, right, right, Brad, that is, that is in an interest-bearing account, right?
Yes, yeah.
Right. Where?
New John Savings Bank.
Excellent. We get stiff rates, and which are high right now, right? Nice. Okay, um. Next up, sewer capacity study.
Okay, yeah, so I just, I handed out what we, what we received, I only got it yesterday, so with a first read, it looked like what we were looking for, but I, I don't think, uh, after only having it for one day, Melanie certainly hasn't looked at it, um, I would not necessarily recommend any action, maybe we're prepared for doing something with that, uh, at the next meeting.
Okay. All right. You tell the supervisor report.
Uh, guys have been working, um, pretty hard at the propulsion, trying to get the fuel for all the, uh, training and, uh, like you said, like Tom said, work reports out. Uh, but they didn't spend a lot of time there to get that. Uh, Walnut Hill Station, the impeller was reinstalled by our guys and pumped back in, it's working fine, uh, so that worked out well for us. Uh, and we pulled the other pump up at the same time, that had a rod in the impeller, it didn't damage it, but there is one, so we, we need to get right down to the body. That only sucked the rag out, that was the one, some rocks are coming.
So who does that, like, Penbrook or?
Um, Penbrook will suck it down, and if we can't last year, if Penbrook's guys will go in the tripod and get what they're selling. Uh, Clark Park One, uh, the new pump that we ordered has come in, uh, until we get a couple electrical issues taken care of there, I don't wanna put the second pump back in, but it's also, I think, going to send it to shop, we've just gotta get it fixed. Uh, this month of leaks, we had, um, we had service leak at thirty-seven Reservoir on the customer side, uh, we had a service leak to Bethel Cinemas on the customer side. Uh, Twelve Water Horse customer side, and twenty Hickok customer side, we're in the middle of working on the Hickok one now, because it's, we're afraid if they don't get after it quick, it's gonna make ice going down Hickok campus. Uh, it's, uh, an old galvanized mine that fed two houses, and they've been subbed by. So luckily, the owner of one house is working with the neighbor that's also on that line to work together to get it repaired, so it's, uh, it's going, isn't friendly, uh, friendly up to standard, so that's good. Uh, and then, uh, up on governors, we've got some waters showing between one and three governors, but I really think it's groundwater, so we're just kinda monitoring it, um, trying to get Corrine to come up out of it, but I don't wanna dig up the road unless I know we have something there. Um, there's no X to use coming out of Oates Hill, which is also telling me that I think it's just groundwater. But other than that, system's good, we just, like they say, needs to, luckily, all these service leaks have been on the pressure side.
Okay.
That's it?
That's it? Is one and three on the right-hand side or left-hand side?
Left-hand side, that's on the pressure side coming out of it, and then the line comes down on its shoulder, and then heads out the rest of the way out of both tubes. There's rarely even enough water to, um, you know, if you get a sample to see if it's Corrine engine, because the ground is wet, that we're watching. you know, if you get a sample to see if it's Corine in, so the ground is wet, so we're watching for it, so it's staying out of the side.
Because there was a, the water line that goes down behind those houses.
You know what? That's, it's right where it's tapped, though. Yeah, so two inch line goes out, yeah, on the uphill side, yeah, yeah. No worry, we've got a leak sign out.
Okay. Anything, uh, anything else to come before the permission?
Uh, I'll say goodbye.
Well.
For now.
For now?
Well, that's the like that. Representative, hopefully, uh, with the new charter. And so the waters like what's good to.
I, I think that's gonna happen. Um, as, as we mentioned earlier, we're, we are gonna go to a seven member board. We'll have two more folks. Um, so we do have an opportunity to reappoint Rich into another seat of the term. Um, Penny Kessler will be joining us in December as the other selectman. So, um, if you know somebody who is qualified for this role, has a background, let me know. And I, obviously, we'll be looking for a Republican for, uh, like, try to keep it even, but I think we, we still make a minor order of representation, you're right.
Yeah, we could go either way. Yeah, so it doesn't matter.
You'll, you find somebody.
Through, starting in, uh, 46.
Right, yeah. Jan, you know, beginning of January is technically the next appointment. It's our first Wednesday in January. First Monday, first Monday.
You, you know, we're up to, they gotta be.
Yeah. Reappointed. Yeah. You both are staying, right? Well, you can get back.
To be honest with you, I don't know what mine's on.
See, that's, I wasn't gonna bring it up, but somebody else. We were just gonna reappoint you. Here you go. Okay. Um, seeing no other official business, I will accept a motion to return. So. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So we stand adjourned at 4:02. Alright, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
I know, this one here.